Allison.
Hi.
How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
I am great now that I see you.
What are you thinking tonight, very long or short?
It's gonna be short, but I got a lot of questions.
Alright.
Can you see me, am I on?
We cannot see you. I just asked to start video, so maybe you'll get a notice.
I just got it. Open Zoom meetings, I thought I was. Cannot start video.
Oh, you know what, if you don't have your video on, you're not allowed to ask questions, did you know that?
Oh, I gotta go over here and see if I got my camera on. I'm gonna tell you right now, I'm asking questions, I don't care.
It's a rule, it's a rule, it's, I know it, it's a law.
I don't care, I'm asking questions. I might have turned off my camera.
Not allowed, Rich, not allowed.
Lisa.
Hi.
How you doing?
I'm wonderful.
Camera is off, so I'm changing it. Right now.
Lisa, it's in the August 10 folder for dog grooming.
Oh, there's our September folder or no?
There is not. Oh, there it is, sorry, it was in the wrong order, I got it. I mean, not your fault, wrong order, but computer was...
That's okay, okay.
Okay, I have it open.
I understand, okay.
Just in case.
Alright.
Still no...
Nope.
This is terrible. Okay, now that I got my camera on, I'm gonna leave and go back and try to recome in.
Okay. Hi Joe.
Good evening.
Oh, Rich, we see you now.
Am I in?
We see you now.
Okay, good. Hey Joe.
Hey Rich, Lisa, Allison.
Hello.
Hey Mike. Hey Mike.
Hey Rich, how you doing?
I'm good, how are you?
Good.
Life couldn't be better, man.
Well, it could. But we got what we got, you know?
Yeah, always could be.
Hey Lisa.
Lisa, I like your hair, are you doing something different?
Thank you, no, it's just down, it's super long too.
Looks like it.
Yeah, did you have it pulled back before?
Yes, I had it up December this morning, I didn't see you this morning though, but yeah, I usually have it up.
Alright. I'm sorry for getting personal.
No, you're, you're fine. Not at all. Great, Rich, that was your only question for the evening, thank you for sharing.
Oh no, I got a whole list, wait till you see my list.
Questions about what?
Dog boarding. Hey Ann.
Hi. How are you?
Hi Ann.
Hi.
Hey Ann.
Yeah, hi. I'm gonna start over here. Oh, there you are. What is this, what's Joe? Joe, I'm sorry about your mother.
Oh, thank you Ann, thanks.
We kind of all just found out through Lisa.
I know, I apologize, Lisa did a good job to let us know, but...
It was too late.
It was too late.
But I didn't know till I got back.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that Joe. You know, I, I sent you an email and I told you that your father was on the planning board when I first got on. And he was just a fantastic gentleman, he really was. Miss him.
I liked him a little bit too.
I'll bet.
My condolences, Joe.
Thank you, thank you.
I lost both my...
He was on this board.
I lost both my parents, so I, I, I know how it feels.
There you go.
How long was your dad on the board?
Forty-four years.
Wow. I sat next to him.
Well, and you were on it too when he was there.
Oh yeah.
You and I and Fred.
That's right. Thank you Lisa for letting us know.
You're welcome, I'm sorry it was late.
Not your fault. You had more important things going on, your family.
Yes.
Hey Arnie, how you doing?
Hey Rich, doing fine, thank you.
Good.
Hi Arnie.
Hi Ann, how are you?
Hey Arnie.
Hi Arnie.
Hi, hey Mike, Lisa, how are you?
Mike.
Hey Joe.
Hey Lisa, how you doing?
How are you, good, how are you?
Not bad, not bad.
Nice to see you.
You too, you too.
Thanks.
Hi Joe.
Hey, how you doing Ann?
Good, good.
Good to see you, I know, you too, how's everything going, alright?
Good, fine.
Good. Good.
Hello, Frank, how you doing?
Hi Frank.
I can't figure it out, you guys all seem to have computers where you see everybody.
Is that right?
Yeah.
I can see, I can see five.
I can only see four people at a time, everybody else is blind.
Well, I can see nine people.
So can I, now 10.
Now 11.
Yeah.
Hey Fred. Fred, how you doing?
Good, Rich, how are you?
I'm good, good.
Wanna say something like we have to quit meeting like this, but it's not up to us.
That goes without saying.
Yeah. Hi Joe.
Hey Fred.
Sorry about your mom.
Oh, thank you, thank you Fred.
Got to, got to visit with her some, I think.
Hey, good evening, can you guys hear me okay?
Yep.
We can, Frank, yep.
Hey Doug.
Hey Miller. Miller, are you still at the office?
He's in the town of Duette.
He's not here.
Right?
Hey Allison.
Yeah, I'm sitting at...
Oh, there he is.
Desk.
Lisa, I can't see, do we have legal counsel on board yet?
Yeah, Joe, I'm filling in as legal counsel tonight.
Oh, okay, good.
You got the young gun in. Thanks.
Hey Joe.
Hey, I don't know who said hey, Frank, hey, how you doing?
Good buddy.
Allison, I'm showing 6:30.
Yes.
Are we ready to go Allison?
We lost Allison.
Hello? We can indeed, we will, okay, bye bye. That was Lisa, she and Allison are having trouble with the internet, they've asked us to hold up for a few minutes.
Hey Doug, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you blacken the screen?
Can I blacken the screen?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know.
There's no need to see you, just blacken the screen.
Nice now.
I could do that, I, I'm sure I could figure that out somehow.
Richard, you are terrible tonight.
Yeah, I know.
Hey Doug, blacking his screen.
Yeah, I could do that too, right?
There you go.
Who's Allison?
It's a tough crowd.
Allison's back.
I'm back, okay. Okay, I'm gonna go live on Facebook right now. Okay.
Is Frank eating?
No, I'm here.
Your picture's not showing.
Yeah, I don't know why.
Hey, we're all set.
Okay, then I call the meeting to order for the town planning board. First item on the agenda is always the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Folks, at our last meeting, we did not have sufficient votes to approve the minutes of the meeting that was conducted on July 27th. That was the marathon meeting, the three and a half hour meeting where we had everything on the agenda. Do we have any requests for changes of, of the minutes of that meeting?
Joe, was that August 10th? It was August 10th, wasn't it Joe?
Yes.
Yeah.
No, no, we, we haven't done August 10th, but we still haven't gotten approval for July 27th.
I thought it was August, the two August meetings we had not done.
That's what I thought too. I apologize if I'm not right.
Lisa?
I'm pretty sure we approved the 27th and we tabled the 10th.
Okay, then we're gonna move forward with the minutes from the meeting on August the 10th.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Request for modification or changes. There being none, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve, I second it.
Motion made by Richard and second by who?
Fred.
Fred?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Are there any opposed? The minutes are approved as written. And the next set of minutes we had was from our meeting on August the 24th.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Second.
Motion made by Ann and was that second by Mike?
Arnie.
I didn't hear who's second.
Arnie.
Arnie, I think.
Arnie, second by Arnie, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I have to state, I wasn't present.
Okay.
Yes, and yourself and Frank weren't present. Okay, motion is approved. Tonight's agenda has an application for a special permit and site plan approval for Dennis Flynn for the property located at 7418 Kirkville Road, East Syracuse. And it is scheduled this evening for a public hearing on both issues, on special permit and site plan. Mr. Flynn, are you with us?
He's muted right now.
I called in also, normally I use a call in number for Zoom meetings, can you hear me?
Yes.
You're hearing now.
You're visible.
How are you tonight, Mr. Flynn?
We're doing great.
Okay, so tonight's for a public hearing. And just for the people who might be listening in on the program, can you, can you just tell us briefly what it is you're trying to do and why?
As far as the boarding goes, right now, we have a...
Yes.
Yeah, so, right now, we have a location out in Chittengale that we're closing and downsizing to just have boarding. We're getting rid of the daycare operation and just doing a small scale boarding for customers that are, so, still wanna be with us. Basically, we're doing reservations only for boarding, so a person would have to call us. They would first be pre-approved, and most of the dogs that are gonna be coming here are already pre-approved as far as a temperament and being able to handle our situation, our location. And then from there, we make a reservation for them to drop off their dog, and at this point, we only have a few dogs that would be coming. We're not planning on having any more, at the most 10. We, it's scattered right now into between five, zero and five. And they would have a reservation to drop off their dog, or we'd pick them up. We're never gonna have two people in here at the same time, because we're gonna have a set reservation drop off and pickup time. So, as far as location, our parking lot's plenty, large enough to accommodate cars coming and going. No one has to back onto the driveway, they can drive right out. Fred and Ann have been here, they've seen this, the parking situation. I think they, they can see that we have plenty of room for people to pull in and out without any incident. And as far as the dogs go, we're, we're gonna be in a, basically a soundproofed building. We're gonna have sound attenuation on the floors, ceilings and walls, the brick building. We are gonna have a fenced in area that will have the dogs out there to lounge around. We're never gonna have them out there by themselves, they're never gonna be out there late or real early in, in the morning. And they're always gonna be attended to, so, we're gonna definitely keep track of any dogs that may bark, we're gonna have control over that. So, you'll never have a dog out there by itself making noise. We've conveyed that to our, our neighbors, and they understand and they're approving of it. And we, I've been here for 32 years, so I definitely have good relationships with the neighbors across the street and both sides of me, and I wanna keep it that way. So, it, as far as I'm, we're concerned, we're gonna make sure that there's no issues with noise.
Okay, now, before we entertain a motion to open up the public hearings, I'd open this up for board if the board has additional questions that they'd like to ask of Mr. Flynn.
I guess I'll start. When you operated your facility in Chittengale, you operated under an LLC. Which your application in Manly is, is not under that LLC, is there a reason?
No, I guess we're just transferring our, our location at this point.
Well, what happened to the LLC?
We're, we're keeping the LLC.
And I'm just curious on why this operation isn't under the same LLC, and I...
I think that with all that we're, we're going through right now, the LLC, we will have changed to this address and to boarding and change the daycare. And I don't know that we can do that, but we will do what we have to do to get an LLC for this location also.
So you'll be, you'll be dissolving the other LLC and creating a new one?
We're gonna see what is required, because I don't know that you can change a name under an LLC. And, so we might have to dissolve one and start anew, but we're gonna be looking into that.
Yeah, we'll talk to our...
It will be an LLC to protect us and to protect, you know, so it will be an LLC.
Have there any been unresolved complaints against the old LLC?
No.
Never.
No.
Okay, alright. I've got more questions, do you want to keep going?
Sure.
One of the, one of the things that concerns me, and I am not, I've never owned a dog, I don't know much about it. But you have cited a couple enzymes that you will be using to clean up the kennel area, the boarding area. And I went online and I did some research and found out that those enzymes are good for stain removal and odor reduction. And I'm just curious on what you're gonna do with the urine and the fecal matter that will be in your boarding area when you wake up in the morning, where's that going?
Well, the dogs will be crated at night, and, and dogs rarely mess in their crates, especially if they're taken care of the night before and they go and do their business. But there, we also did cite the enzymes that kill viruses and bacteria when, when I returned that email. There is, that brand has a couple different uses, and so we use both. We use the one for spot cleaning and we use the one for bacteria killing.
And, and I did look those up, and I did look and see what they do, but, and I hate to even, this is a terrible subject matter to get into, but the fecal matter will still be on the floor. You can sanitize it, but you gotta put it somewhere.
Well, yeah, you, you clean up a mess just like anything else, and you wash the floor that has the mess on it.
And you, and we use, when we do our weekly stamp mopping, we use Pine-Sol, which is also bacterial killing, it kills 99% of germs.
Okay, so, one of the items in the county's recommendation to us was that you get the Board of Health, Bureau of Public Health Engineering to sign off on this, what is it that they're gonna be looking at or for?
I don't, we didn't have that...
I saw that in the county letter, and I think that's more for human waste.
Yeah.
No, that's not, that, I called them today, that is for exactly what I'm talking about.
We, we do have, what we've been doing for the three years out in Chittengale is we have a dog, dog duty, duty service. They come out, they bring us the buckets, they come out and they take, they remove it, and they take it to wherever they take it to be made into fertilizer, I guess. So we, we just bucket it and we dip it off.
Okay, what about the urine?
Urine, you can clean up with, with paper towels and use your enzymes, and the enzymes break it down and you wipe it up. And, and we do not have odors at our current location from three years of cleanups. We, we are very diligent on cleaning up immediately, and even outside, we clean up immediately. I'm always watching them and I pick things right up. And to be somewhat gross, I sometimes get the little flat shovel right underneath them while they're going and it never hits the ground.
Okay, no, I, I, and I appreciate that. I'm just wondering, are, are you planning to have water at this three stall garage?
At the present time, if we, we have the water available right here in, in our house, so it's just a matter of bringing out buckets and using them that way, so...
I guess I'm, I'm trying to understand how you're gonna clean your hands when you're in the, the garage, taking care of what we just talked about, without a sink?
I use hand sanitizer. And I clean up with gloves.
And we also have spray bottles, wash bottles, like Windex, things like that, so...
The gloves are disposable and they go with the, with the, the paper towels.
Okay, let me see if I got some other questions here.
I have a problem, I'm not having water right there at the facility.
Yeah, I do too, that's, that's one of my concerns.
Okay. We can, we can make that available, we can do, we could do a water line with a, you know, like a holding tank or something for gray water, that's not a problem.
Now, under Anadog County, they, they said here that the, the Anadog County Health Department's Bureau of Public Health Engineering must formally accept or approve, respectively, any existing or proposed septic system to services property prior to or as a condition of uniscible approval of the site plan of special permit.
And I think, I think where that goes, in my opinion, I, humbly, my opinion, is that we wait to hear back from the county as far as what this applicant is doing or not doing before we even vote on this thing, but that's just my opinion.
See, for me, I mean, I've had horses and dogs and cats and so on, I've always had to have water. I mean, I just, you know, and I think if you have a, if you have people coming there, you need some kind of a restroom and a sink.
No one's gonna be here other than us.
They, we, I go to, especially with COVID, I go to the car, remove the dog, bring it in the building at the Chittengale location, they do not get out of their car, especially with COVID. And we plan on continuing that. They're, they're not gonna come in and hang around, we, that's not, we don't... They're, they're not gonna come in and hang around, we, we, that's not, we don't allow other people to come in the building when there's dogs present. For liability reasons.
We've always been like, grab, pick up, drop off, that's it.
And I hear what you're saying and, you know, I just look at this in a big picture view and that is today you don't want any employees, but what about five years from now?
We're still gonna be the same size, we're not, we're not upsizing ever.
And I told Fred today when we saw him, I have received a diagnosis that has changed my future. I can, I do not want to continue the daycare, it was a lot of work. I want to downsize and stay downsized so that I can resort to this when I'm declared disabled and can no longer do my current career. And I wanna be able to take care of these dogs and make money and, and I wanna keep it small scale and easy and simple. And so that'll be three to five dogs and occasionally on a holiday weekend, we might get, might get a little, you know, more. But I'm not gonna, it's not gonna be on the regular and it's, it's meant to be, to be small and stay small.
I'm, I'm very sorry to hear that, I, I, I am. Um, so I guess as part of our special use permit, we can make a condition that no employees are ever hired.
Yeah, that's fine. So, and because of, now if we put, so you're saying if we put a septic tank in or for a, a holding tank? What, 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 for water or for the water or what, what are you saying?
I am not, I am not a professional in this, but it just, I'm looking at this from a logical standpoint, I may be totally wrong. But I would think you'd want water to that facility for not only cleaning the floor, but also cleaning yourselves, you know, your hands and so on.
Yeah.
And your clean facility and having floor drain that is then tied into a septic tank to take whatever matter that's on the, on the floor to clean it up, which I would think you'd wanna do once a day. But again, I'm just thinking.
Yeah, well, that's not how we do it now and it, the facility's a lot larger than what we have, what we're proposing, planning on. So, no, we don't have a floor drain, there's no reason for a floor drain, that's just way too much water. It, it's, it's the floor, the manufacturer's recommendation, don't even call for that.
This is made for dogs and it, and there is recommendations by the manufacturer on how to handle the cleanup and I can give you that information if you'd like.
Well, I, I did get the information on the enzymes that you use and I, I didn't really, that did not satisfy me. I'm just one member, I would think you'd want a better way to clean up the facility than just spraying the enzymes. But I'll let other people ask.
You know, I have a different question, do, do you do any dog washing?
No, we do at the daycare currently, but when we shut down those services, that won't be anything we provide.
That, that would speak to the need for water.
Yeah, that's, that's why we're not going to be providing it.
If it, you know...
That would, that would speak to another condition of the special use permit then too.
So...
I've got a question, this is Joe Lupia. I'm seeing a brand new structure being constructed next to your garage. Uh, and it looks like it's, it's gonna be, uh, at least another bay to the garage. Can you tell us what it is that you've started the building now?
Well, we did, we figured we're gonna need more storage and if, for whatever reason, um, we need more space for, if we ever decide to, um, have a wash area, we, we, in the, in, in the interim, we decided, well, we'll prep a couple of water, some stubbed up through the concrete, so if we do need water, we're ready for it. So, but at this point, we don't feel like we need it, but if, if it comes to where we have to have it, we're gonna, we're gonna prep for it in that storage space.
Then, then Joe, that, that should be off of the site plan, we shouldn't be reviewing that at this point.
Right now, it's just a permit for, for storage.
Did you pull the second permit?
Beg your pardon?
Is there more than one permit?
I have a, there's two permits, one for that storage on the side of the belt, the garage, and then I'm building a storage building behind the, the present building, solely separate from this.
I was not aware of that, I, I only knew about the three stall garage turning into a, a boarding facility. Did, did we get a separate application for the garage?
Yeah, I've got two separate applications for those built, for that, one's an addition, one's a building.
Yes, Rich, we have two permits.
I see you nodding, Lisa.
We have two permits from Mr. Flynn for the addition and the garage.
Okay, and, and what is the garage for?
Just storage, put my cars and motorcycles, boat, stuff like that.
When we clean out this three car garage, we need to put his belongings and his tools in another location and that's what that's for.
Okay, Lisa, what does the application say?
Uh, exactly what they just said, I don't have it in front of me, but I can get it if you need it.
Okay, okay, I, I haven't seen that, so I'm unaware of it, so I'm, I apologize.
Rich, I have a, Rich, I have a copy of the survey in my file along with the application, which shows the building of that storage barn in the back as well as the addition onto the garage. So that was part of the application that was submitted.
Okay, alright, thanks, Joe. And I, I see there's a fence that will use part of the building as a barrier, I'll call it. Is there any, any focus on using that, that new building as part of the dog boarding structure?
No, no, there's no entrance or exit into that fenced area, it shows that on the permit. The only openings I have are in the front of this storage building, overhead door and a man door, and at the back, an o, an overhead door. Nothing on the side where the fence is, other than a window.
Okay, thank you.
Kind of a furnace do you have? What kind of a heater, a furnace?
It's a forced air furnace.
Forced air.
Yeah.
Are, are the garage doors on the existing three stall garage insulated?
Yes.
Yeah, we're taking one of them, I'm gonna get rid of one of them and just put a window in there and insulate that wall.
But that's not part of the site plan?
No, it's just, it, it's just taking, you're just changing out a garage door, basically.
And your hours of operation are going to be?
As far as people coming and going, it's like seven to seven, you know, but it's all by reservation. So it's not, you know, it's, everybody's gonna come in at set time and drop their dog off, a set time to pick their dog up. So we'll know when they're coming and going.
If it's very early or very late, I will be making trips to, so that people aren't coming and going at, at crazy hours. If somebody has a, a flight to catch, they usually drop the, the dog off the day before, but if they can't do that, then I will make the trip out to get the dog.
And what is the time that the dogs will be in for the evening and not out again?
Nine o'clock, a quick out to go to the bathroom and back in to go into the crates.
So they're not, they're not gonna be out until nine o'clock, it's a, out, around nine o'clock would be the latest they go out to, to go to, get their fresh air. So it's, it's not gonna be from seven to nine at night, they're not gonna be outside.
Any further questions from the board? The only thing I guess, Joe, that I can think of that I, I'd like to say before we issue the special permit would be more details on what we just heard about when the dogs go out, when they come in, who's there, who's not there, just so that we have an understanding of what takes place day to day.
Do you want that in writing? I, I, we could do it right now, I guess, whatever you prefer.
I would think before we issue the special permit, that would be part of it, that would be part of the special permit. But again, I'm just one vote, I'm just speaking what I'm thinking, you know, other people may have other ideas.
Does this operation, is, is it twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five?
As far as if the dogs could, yeah, we could have potentially, yeah, we could potentially have a dog here.
But there might be weeks where there's no dog.
Yeah, right now, we have no one scheduled and, and, and we don't have any, any dogs scheduled right now for boarding. So this is more or less going down the road, as COVID opens up, we'll, we'll start to see some people using our services. But since COVID kicked in, we've only had just a few, uh, reservations for boarding. So this is more going down the future than it is at the present time.
I did wanna ask you, uh, yesterday when I drove by, there were four cars out behind your house. Uh, are those yours or are those customers as well?
No, no, that's all our, that's our vehicles, my son, Julie has a car, I have a company car and a, and a truck, my son has a Jeep.
And another Jeep out back.
Yeah, that's just, but when I put the storage building in, then I could put my vehicles in there.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, I, I have one, Joe, how, how do you handle dogs in the winter time?
What, I didn't hear you?
How do you handle dogs in the winter time?
Same, same type of thing, dogs will go outside for a little while and dogs aren't out, we're not having them outside from the beginning to end. They're inside most of the time, laying around, hanging out, playing with each other, they're just rolling around on the floor, stuff like that. We send them outside to get some fresh air, but it's not a type of thing where they're out for long periods of time anyway.
And that facility in the winter time is heated then, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we have forced air furnace in there.
I hate to even ask this question, but I got, I gotta ask it based on a question that you answered. You said there's a Jeep out and back that will be in the new building once it's constructed. Is that what you just said?
I'm putting, I'm, I'm, I'm putting the buildings up so I could put my vehicles in there, my trucks, things like that. So there's a vehicle out back that my son owns that is off the road and he's trying to sell it. That's, that's probably what you saw way out back.
Okay, okay.
So if you, if you wanted ninety-nine Jeep Cherokee, I've got one for you.
No, thank you.
Okay, and if we have any other questions, if you do speak up now, then I would entertain a motion to open a public hearing regarding special permit and site plan approval.
I'll make that motion.
I'll make a motion to waive the reading of the public notice.
A second.
Motion made in second in the way of the reading of the public notice, all in favor? Repose, motion carries, the reading of the public notice is waived. Now I would entertain a motion to open a public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Ann, second by Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is hereby opened. Is anybody on board, Allison?
Uh, we do have one attendee in the room who is not named, uh, but I don't see anything in the Q and A.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made in second for close the public hearings, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The public hearings are hereby closed. At this point, I think we need to go over a criterion for special permit. Joe, are you on board for that?
Yeah, that's fine, I can do that. Alright, so the first question is, in this plan, is the community protected from traffic congestion and com, and conflicts, flooding and excessive soil, erosion, unnecessary noise, lighting and odors, wasteful energy use and other forms of pollution?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, can I jump in and I, I would like to hear back from the county before we take this next step. I mean, right now, the county planning has said that on both issues, they should go before county Board of Health Engineering and it might be good if we heard back from them before we took this next step. Again, I'm just one person, but that's kinda what I'm thinking that I'd like to hear.
Mr. Rosetti, I'm taking that as a motion that you'd like to defer until county approves?
It's exactly, it's exactly what I said.
Okay. I'm looking to hear if there's a second on that.
Aye, second.
Second by Michael Roy. We're gonna have a vote, all in favor of deferring a decision on this and proceeding with, uh, the criterion for special permit until after we hear back from county, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm having trouble figuring out who is saying aye.
Mike, aye.
Rich, aye.
Ann, aye.
Frank.
Did we hear from Fred?
Yeah, no. I don't think so, I, I, I think that, that, the way that I read the county's remarks, they wanted, uh, these folks to, before they, before they operated, to have, uh, an okay from the county health department about their septic system, it said, is it specifically about their septic system?
Okay. Uh, and did we hear from Frank?
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
We can hear you.
Okay, as far as the septic system goes, septic systems are typically for human waste. I'm not sure that the county health department, and I haven't seen the language from them, but I'm not sure they're concerned about that. Otherwise, it would be something other than a septic system to deal with canine waste. So I'm unclear, I guess, as to what the requirement is, maybe if you have it, Joe, there, you could read it just to make sure that we're clear on what we're, we're voting on.
And I don't, I don't have that right in front of me, with the exact wording from the county.
I've got it, I, I have it in front of me, I can, I can read it. The county, uh, the county suggested two, two points. One was that the applicant must contact the Anadog County Department of Transportation to coordinate requirements for the existing driveway on Kirkville Road in order to satisfy commercial driveway standards. And then the municipality must ensure any mitigation as may be determined by the department is reflected on the project plans prior to or as a condition of municipal approval. And two, the Anadog County Health Department's Bureau of Public Health Engineering must formally accept or approve respectively, any existing or proposed septic system to services property prior to or as a condition of municipal approval of the site plan and special permit. Those are the two points raised by the county, um, planning agency.
Okay, let me ask the applicant. Uh, are you, are you intending to utilize a septic system for this?
No, that, we have a septic system for our house.
Yes, I understand that.
Right, this, no, we're not, we don't have a need for a septic system in the building, we're not gonna have a toilet.
No, I understand that as well, that's why I've, I've asked to have that read, so it, so it's clear to me what they're requesting, that's all.
Yeah, if we were gonna have a toilet there, I could see where they would wanna, see what the existing, yeah.
Yeah, I understand that.
Okay, going back to the vote.
Can I add one point?
I believe we have three ayes. Richard, Ann and Mike, are there any more that are ayes? That being the case, the motion does not carry. So we're back into the criteria again, Joe.
Sure. Alright, um, let me back up, I'll, I'll restart this whole process, uh, from the, from the top. So the ultimate question that needs to be asked is, will the project have an adverse effect on adjacent lands, the immediate neighborhood or on the character of the community? And then we ask the more specific questions, uh, which I started the last time. So the first question is, in this plan... And then we ask the more specific questions, which I started the last time. So the first question is, in this plan, is the community protected from traffic congestion and conflicts, flooding and excessive soil erosion, unnecessary noise, lighting and odors, wasteful energy use and other forms of pollution?
Yes. Yes.
And I think it might result in unnecessary noise.
Yeah.
Yeah, slight to moderate.
Yeah, does this?
Well, we we, well, you're thinking that we're gonna have excessive noise?
That's that's what we're saying. Yes, that it's a possibility of excessive noise.
Well, we're guaranteeing you that there's not gonna be excessive noise.
Okay, we we understand what you're saying, Mr. Flynn, but we need to move on through the criteria now. So right right now, this is between the attorney and the board.
Okay.
All right, second question. Does this plan protect the community from inappropriate design and other manners of scenic and aesthetic significance?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Does this plan ensure that the proposed use will be in harmony with the appropriate and orderly development of the district in which it is proposed?
Yes. I don't know. That's that's maybe.
That's the question. Maybe.
Can any adverse impacts be mitigated by compliance with certain conditions?
Yeah.
I think so.
And does the project conform with the town's planning goals and objectives?
Yes.
All right, now it's up to the town board to consider what conditions we'd want to attach to this to this project if we were to approve the site plan and the special and the special permit here. So I think now would be a good time to have a discussion as far as what those conditions would be.
I would I would shorten the length of time just to, you know, to give it, you know, to a trial period. I mean, I would put one or two year, one, one year to two years maximum on it for the length of the permit.
I think we should restrict the number of hours that it's open so that it doesn't interfere with any neighbors. I think we should restrict the number of employees, that there are going to be no employees. And I think we should put a restriction on the number of dogs permitted to control all of that, to see to it that the neighbors are not disturbed and that there is no issue with that particular neighborhood. Just throwing that, just throwing it out. I'm only one voice.
Well, Mr. Chairman, they said that the the total number of dogs were not going to exceed 10 right from the very beginning, and most of the time it's going to be a lot less. As far as the permanent employees is or employees are concerned, I would be in favor of maybe not having additional permanent employees, but I hate to have these folks not be able to hire somebody in case if there's a family emergency that they need to.
And Fred, I understand that from an operational standpoint, but the the problem it creates is that you have somebody in this three stall garage with no bathroom.
You mean for humans?
For, yeah, for the for the temporary, part time, full time, whatever this employee is. I mean, if you're gonna have an employee in that facility, I think they need to have a bathroom.
They have one in the house.
Yeah, well, I understand that, but that to me, that isn't adequate. And it's again, like Joe just said, I'm just one vote.
Well, when you when you when you hire people to work on your property, you you either have to provide a porta potty or you have to allow the persons to use your inside bathroom, don't you? I mean, that's 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 seems to be the way that that works. And if these folks have somebody that comes in temporarily, part time, and they can use the bathroom in the house, I know it's okay with me.
I'm not a lawyer, and maybe Joe can speak to this, but having an employee have access to your house is probably not something that's legal unless you have something in writing which allows them to step inside your house.
Actually, what Fred said is accurate. That that would work. The other Joe, our town attorney should advise us on this.
Well, that's that's the Joe I was talking about.
Well, people can contract if these if the applicants wanted to contract and call this these people volunteers rather than employees and not pay them, then they could certainly give them access to their house. I don't want to give them legal advice either as far as what they should be doing and do or can't do. But if we want to restrict, if we want to restrict them from having employees and they want to use volunteers, that's outside of our restriction. So if there is an emergency and they want somebody and they need somebody to take care of these animals, they can certainly do it by not having employees. Rich, I don't know if that totally addresses your point, but.
No, 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 that does. I mean, we we talked before this. The applicant said, we aren't gonna have employees. Fine. Let's put that in a special permit. Let's put the two items that the county planning board said should be resolved in the the special use permit. And, you know, if they get them resolved, they get them resolved. Great.
This, guys, this is Frank Mento. I agree with what Rich just said. This is, you know, something I think can be resolved through the process. I think if we want to put the conditions in the special permit, the two county referral conditions, that's fine. And and I'm good with that.
So what we've got is.
Couple minor things. One is there's no lighting shown on the site plan, so we we I'm assuming there's gonna be lighting out there, so we should show the show the lighting. And then the second thing is, I don't believe we need to mark the pavement for parking spots, but we should know how many parking spots are anticipated on that site, just so if we do have complaints in the future, the codes office can go back and mark against site plan without without any conflict.
You know, dog along with lighting. Is there any signage?
That's another question.
I believe I believe in their application, I said there's gonna be no signage.
No, there's gonna be a sign on the building, a small sign on the building, and the people could use their there's a number on the post on the mailbox.
Yeah, but I I think they said there would be no signage. And I'll ask the applicant, is that what they said in their application?
Well, Dan was correct. Ian was correct. We were gonna put a small sign on the on the face of the building by the door.
Just so the customer knows which where to drive up to.
Yeah.
And that that we're not gonna put anything on the road. They can use their GPS to locate her.
Is that in the application?
Yes, it was in there.
It was in there. Okay, all right.
The application, the application clearly says no signage.
That's that's what I thought.
H two, item B ten. H two, item B ten, proposed signage, no signage.
Then we discussed it the last meeting.
Yeah, we we discussed, because the way I read that was a sign in the road. Design it.
When we hit the face to face, that was just that we discussed that then.
Right. Yeah.
Okay, so let's clarify exactly what additional conditions we're looking for. It sounds to me like everybody's in agreement that the two county referral conditions are to be included as conditions of any special permit. It sounds to me like we're agreeing on that there shall be no permanent employees added to the to to run this. It's an additional condition. Did we let me decide the number of hours? Do we want to?
I I think they've stipulated to the number of hours.
Why don't we just use what they told us that from seven o'clock in the morning to nine o'clock at night, after nine o'clock, the dogs will be in for the evening.
I'm thinking it was something different than, let me get my.
I thought the hours were seven to seven with a seven to nine outage.
I've got hours of operation on the first page, eight AM to nine AM to drop off and pick up, six PM to seven PM, drop, off, pick up. I mean, they're open all day long, but they're not allowing traffic to come and go according to their application. Am I missing something?
Yeah, our our operational hours are 24/7 if you want to look at it that way, when we have dogs, sure. But as far as people coming and going, then that's where we put those numbers in there.
Right. That's what should be on it, in my opinion, Joe.
Are we all in agreement? And are we talking then in terms of eight AM?
Eight AM to nine AM to have people coming and going from the property, six to seven PM, people coming and going from the property, but obviously, they have to be monitoring and working the property 24/7.
Right. And based upon the application, the number of dogs is limited to 10?
Correct.
Any other conditions, folks?
We have a condition as far as when the dogs can be outside. Do we want to make that explicit as far as dogs can't be outside after nine PM or before AM?
That's that's a good point, and I guess I would make it, since they're closing at seven PM and opening again at eight AM, is that reasonable to say from seven PM to eight AM, the dogs will not be outside?
Well, they're gonna need to go to the bathroom late, you know, right before they go to bed, a quick out empty their bladders, run back in and go to bed. I mean, that was that's what people do to own dog.
It might be nine PM to eight AM, Rich.
Okay, well, then that's fine. As long as we have something, that's fine.
Okay, anyone else have an additional condition? Based upon these conditions, I would entertain a motion relative to a special permit.
Wait. May I say something?
Absolutely not. No.
We have not done seeker.
Okay, well.
Yeah, but we can still.
It's before spent, this is before a site plan approval.
All right, just making sure you remember.
No, no, I know.
Okay.
Can I just jump in here to to clarify something? Ann had raised a very good point earlier that we would approve this for a one year, two year, three year period to see how things worked out. So are we looking to grant a special permit for two years or some, and I'll throw this back to you, I mean, I, what are we looking at?
Well, because of the, you know, because of the problems that we're looking at, you know, employees not employees, bathroom not bathroom, that I was thinking to reduce the number of years that the permit is granted, one to two years to give at least the first year like that.
Okay, so this would be a special use permit for one year?
Yes.
Is it?
After what what happens at the end of one year then?
It can be renewed.
It'll be determined whether or not any complaints have been filed. And if if everything is fine and dandy, it can be renewed, and it can probably be renewed for a longer term.
Three to five years.
We we've done that in the past, Ann.
Yeah, and I would agree, that's a good way to approach this.
Also, we should, is there something in there in the lighting where the dogs go out? They're on the side of the building. Do you have any lights out there? Motion detecting lights are currently in place.
We need those shown.
Is there a fence up so when they go out, they? There will be a fence. Yeah, there there's a big privacy fence that's going up.
Six foot privacy fence.
Guess then there's only one other condition I put on this, Joe, and that is that the applicant takes in no dogs until it's fully built out. And since they made the additional building part of the fencing area, they've they've got to build that building before they can bring dogs in.
Yeah, the the new building's going in this week.
I understand that, but you don't have a fenced in area in the back either.
No, we're not gonna have dogs until we have that fence in. We gotta take the fence out of the, right now, our last day of operation in Chittengale is gonna be the 30th while the 29th of this month. And then we're gonna take the fence that's there and bring it here. So we're not planning on having anything going on until October.
Or November.
I mean, November.
Okay, I guess what I'm saying, though, is that you're showing in your site plan that the new building that hasn't been built yet is going to be part of the fenced in area containing the dogs. And until that's built, it's it's not complete. So you can't take dogs in, this is my opinion. You can't take dogs in until that building and the fence is done.
Yep, correct.
Okay.
That's we agree on that.
That should be a condition.
It's agreeing to it so that can be incorporated.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, that's that's fine. We wouldn't do it anyway without it.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, no, we.
Okay.
We really need, yeah.
So we're gonna do a roll call relative to well, actually, we need to hear a motion, a motion to approve this special permit based upon these conditions.
So moves.
What's the, what's the time? Joe, what's the time limit? Are we talking about one year?
Yes.
They were talking about one year.
Rich, I would or both all, I would really be in favor of being two years because they're not gonna be able to start this operation until probably winter.
Yeah, Fred, I don't have a problem with two years. I think it's it's important to have a short deadline, so if it's two years, I'm fine with that.
I'd rather it be two years than one.
Okay.
Ann, are you okay?
Oh, sure.
I would I would agree too, Joe.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Okay, so we've got a motion made by, was it, was it Arnie?
Yeah.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Richard. Vote. Fred Gilbert.
Yeah, aye.
Richard Rosetti.
Yes.
Frank Mento.
Yes.
Michael Roy.
Yes.
Ann Kelly.
Yes.
Arnie Poulterson.
Yes.
And myself, yes. The special permit is approved. Can our council lead us through seeker, please?
I will. So I'm gonna go through the questions in part two of the short environmental assessment form. Answer after I'm finished reading the question. This is to determine whether the proposed action here will have a significant environmental impact or not. So the first question is, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulation?
No.
No.
Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land?
No.
No.
No, little.
Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
No.
No. Maybe a little.
Will the proposed will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area?
No.
No.
Will proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking or walkway?
No.
No.
Will proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonable available energy conserv conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
No.
No.
Will proposed action impact existing public private water supplies, public private wastewater treatment utilities?
No.
No.
Will proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources?
No.
No.
Will the proposed action result in any adverse change to natural resources?
No.
No.
Proposed action result in an increase of potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems?
No.
No.
Will proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?
No.
No.
Would anyone at this time like to make a motion for a finding of no significant impact, environmental impact for seeker purposes?
I'll make that.
So moved.
Motion made by Ann, seconded by Michael Roy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carries. Negative seeker. Okay. I would entertain a motion relative to site plan approval based upon the site plan submitted.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Are there any nays? Motion carries. Site plan is approved as is. So the special permit is granted with those additional conditions, and site plan is approved.
Thank you.
Good luck, Mr. Flynn. Keep an eye on everything.
Well, we received.
We have no other business on the calendar tonight.
Yes.
On our next agenda, we will be having in addition some new regulations dealing with zoning are being proposed. They're being addressed by the board right now, by the town board. And they want to go over them with us. So at our next meeting, we will have a guest speaker talking to us about the new proposed regulations. And I think they really get a lot of questions answered. They're going to make Randy Capriati's life a little bit easier because they're going to, better definition to the different categories and what's permitted in every classified zone. So that'll be an interesting one. It'll be interesting. Fred?
Yes, I move the meeting adjourned.
Second.
Seconded by Michael Roy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The meeting stands adjourned. Thank you, folks.
Thanks, Joe.
Have a good evening. Thanks, Joe.
Yes.